The following program is sponsored by The Greek. Ely's Radio Shack Theater at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Special White Pine County Commission Meeting, July 6th, 2023.
I'd like to call this meeting order. It's the special meeting of the White Pine County Commission, Thursday, July 6th, 2023, 9:00 a.m. I'd ask that you all please rise. Follow me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. All right. So you're going to start off with public comment. Do we have any public comment from the room? A public comment from the room? Do we have any on Zoom or on the telephone line? Sir? Mr. Tatchus?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, of the projects being presented, the request from Nevada Northern Railway Foundation should be last or scrapped. I remind you that there is an nepotism problem that has existed for years. They failed to collect track record fees from their SMS short line for 15 years or more. They have cost the city and the foundation a million or more in legal fees with no results. They have failed to operate under Nevada Open Meeting Law, as was done for years in the past. They have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayers' money but fail miserably in showing how the money is spent. The foundation and their city council directors failed to answer rumors that tens of thousands of dollars have been embezzled. True or false should be very simple. It is one thing to not account for city and county tax monies, but there's a huge problem dealing with proper expenditures and reporting of federal grant monies. To date, the foundation does not address the lack of ADA compliance on the walking trail from the railroad museum to the public museum on Altman. The walking trail was funded by a federal grant and is required to be maintained. That needs to be addressed. That's been going on for quite some time. Mr. Chairman, I want to repeat my requests regarding the victims' funds for those who have suffered losses and have not been given proper consideration by the legal or law enforcement system. I've asked numerous times, but I don't see anything on your agenda. You need to address that. Mr. Chairman, I repeat again, the new courthouse complex is still not compliant with federal ADA regulations on the southeast corner where there is handicap parking. There is no ramp to access only two steps, which impede the using of a wheelchair. Your building inspector failed to, and the correction needs to come out of his pocket. I believe you had a contract with him or the commission as a whole. You cannot select or enforce federal standards or requirements. You need to address that. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? One last chance? All right. Then we will move into item number one. Discussion for possible action. Evaluation and determination of final ranking of Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act, Snipoma, round 20 projects. Tabitha Hamilton, Delaney Marriage Grant Specialist. Morning, Tabitha.
Good morning. How are you? So as you guys can see in your backup, we received a couple different project nominations. The Backstop Lake Restoration is no longer usable because we don't have a willing seller at this time. So it's possible it to come forward in a future round. And then we have the Little League Fields, McGill Ballpark, Lackawanna Park, and then our White Face Four and the Ruins Park upgrades. So we'll give them all the chance to come and present their projects. And I think we'll have the McGill Ballpark.
Okay. Very good. Good morning. How are you doing, Julie?
Good. I'm going to be presenting the McGill Ballpark project today. So this is Phase Three. Sorry, I didn't want to say something wrong.
Yeah, just being polite.
We're kind of used to it. This is Phase Three of the complete restoration of the McGill Ballpark. It would be on Forest Street and having a heat and hot wheel. Thank you. So this would be Snipoma Round 20, and based on estimates from an engineer and requested deliverables, we anticipate that it would be about $6 to $8 million. So to begin with, the Major League Ball Field still needs a few renovations. For starters, the midfield bleachers there on the left need to be restored to match the main set of bleachers there on the right. Essentially, just removing all of those bleacher boards, the dirt and basement, restoring those steel frames, and then replacing them with aluminum bleachers. And then the overhead lights. So we can see in that photo that there's two sets of light fixtures on the light posts there. There's the high level and the mid level. The mid level lights will be replaced. So we'll be removing the old lights, rewiring the posts, and getting the electrical feed panel. And then new LED light fixtures will be installed at the mid level there. And then the last big improvement to the Major League Field will be the sprinkler system and maintenance house. And the system is completely, it needs to be redone. And that maintenance house is photographed there. We would be removing that building, constructing a new one, and constructing a retaining wall, and then hooking up all of the waterline sprinkler system and installing the back foot for adventure. For the Little League side, the first improvement would be the dugouts. So they're pretty much outdated as everything is on this side of the field. So it would be removing the fencing, the roofing, and then the concrete floor there. And then the steel frame would be repaired and painted to match the Kennebec green. And then we would replace those benches with new aluminum seats and replace the fencing and roofing. Again, the bleachers. There's a photo of the current Little League bleachers and a photo of the historic bleachers on the main field. And then the backstop, we would be removing the existing fence fabric and repairing the steel frame, painting it to match Kennebec green, and then replacing the fence fabric. For the dirt area between the bleachers and the backstop, we would be removing all of the debris, regrading it if necessary, and then installing new walking surface. The announcer's booth is the biggest improvement on this side of the field. We would be removing the existing building and the concrete floor and then constructing an entirely new building, installing the electrical service, new lighting service. There would be a field light shut-off located within the announcer's booth and then installing the announcing equipment and speaker system. And then more minor improvements to the Little League field would just be getting new pitchers mounted, new bases, the portable fencing, and outlet foul holes, that sort of thing. The playground on the left there is the playground that was installed in Phase Two. Phase Three improvements, we would be adding shade structures and ADA accessible benches and picnic tables. We would add a swing extension to the swings that you can barely see on the left side of the photo there. And then the existing dirt stockpile down below would be graded into an ice skating rink for winter activities. The parking lot, I apologize. I didn't think to take a better picture of the parking lot, but if you've been there in the last 20 years, it's the exact same. And I came back for those 20 years. I'm sure there's more. But they would be upgrading the drainage system and grading and paving it, installing alley gutters to control the runoff. The sidewalk would be updated to be ADA compliant and then refurbishing the old Kennebec lights that you can barely see in that photo for historical accuracy. And then we would be fitting new LED lights into those existing fixtures. More improvements to the overall park and the perimeter. We would be repairing the fence and adding a new sprinkler system to both fields and a new maintenance house. We want to refurbish that old maintenance, or old restroom building for maintenance and storage, building a new concession stand, and then there would be a new maintenance building for equipment and new equipment purchased for grooming of the field. So costs and benefits. The initial high costs are going to be those on the right there. Part left, the parking lot, all of the new systems that we'll be replacing and the new buildings. The benefits to this project, though, is that all of the systems that we would be replacing, we will replace with cost and energy efficient systems. Also, all of the new aluminum and the new systems should reduce maintenance for the future. This will complete the final phase of the McGill Ballpark and restore it to historical accuracy. And then it also meets several goals of the said document. So the goals that it meets for White Pine County are Goal Two and Five, to address outdated infrastructure and expand outdoor recreation. And the goals it meets for McGill are to improve community infrastructure and maintain developed parks and natural resources. Future maintenance should be reduced based on replacing the existing systems. And we think that it should reduce maintenance drastically for the first five to 10 years. And then it would also reduce the cost of energy. It also meets three out of five of the Department of the Interior's priorities for Snipoma with potential to meet a fourth. So it will support union jobs, it will retain and conserve lands, and it will benefit tribal low-income and other disadvantaged communities. It has the potential to meet the second priority, to strengthen government relationship with tribal nations. But we didn't feel comfortable saying that it does meet that requirement until we've had a chance to speak with the tribes around here. It has a lot of community support. So this project has support from the McGill Town Council, local residents. We've already received over 10 letters of support. I think we should have all of those. Some of them are in front of you and some of them are in the backup. The White Pine County baseball teams, and then even surrounding communities are very supportive of this park. And I included a Facebook post from the head coach of the Laughlin baseball team and an excerpt from an article that was in the Alco Daily News because it shows just what people from outside our community are saying as they come in and visit this facility. And lastly, I can answer any questions now or I would invite the McGill Town Council or the engineer who did the estimates and who discussed this to be able to answer questions or if you can contact Taffy, the line, or Ellen Barkey.
I have a question.
Please.
I mean, are they, are you going to be able to include the letter? It's a really nice letter, the one that you gave an excerpt from in regards to the McGill Ball Field. Can you include that in this Snipoma so far as?
Yeah, we can include that. I think we can include that as, yeah, backup and appendix to our application.
And what about tourism? I mean, if we have this type of a ball field so far as having tournaments, bigger tournaments and that type of stuff here? I don't know. I didn't hear any of that.
What you're asking is if we build it, will it come?
But it's true. I'm serious. I think so.
Yeah.
I didn't see tourism there, but I do think that that, that, you know.
I think so too. And I think that was kind of addressed in addressing White Pine County's Goal Five, to increase outdoor recreation and events. I think that it will draw people. I'm not much of a baseball person myself. But I will tell you, when I stepped out on the restored side, I was telling Taffa, I was like, I feel like I need sand law. This is America's pastime. You know, I think that it does. Just like, just some thoughts of our attention.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think the numbers of people would come to see the facility all finished. I think, I think you'd be surprised. The one question I have is scoreboards. Where are we at on scoreboards over there? Do we, is that something we can include? I know those are pretty cost prohibitive.
Yeah, you could definitely speak to the people that would be doing the project. The Major League scoreboard was already repaired in a previous phase. And then the Little League scoreboard is relatively new and is not in need of repair. If it was something that you wanted to include in the project, maybe like a staple or something, I think that you could speak to them.
Yeah, I just, I knew we had scoreboards. I just didn't, wasn't sure what the functionality was and if they were something that needed to be addressed or if McGill's comfortable with, with the status that they're in. But it just seemed like right now is prime time, and I know that, that those are ridiculously expensive. So if we're going to be doing something with them, this is the time.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? On that?
I have one.
Who are you? Go ahead. It's Hank.
This is Hank Boker for the record.
Hey, Hank.
I understand where the money comes from. But are we putting the cart before the horse? We have an estimate, but what about if we go over budget? Does the county pick that up? Or if we go under budget, do we turn the funding back to Snipoma, or how does that work?
Yeah, so as with any grant, if we do not use the fully allotted amount, we would give that money back to the granting agency. If we go over budget, there is a special accounts reserve with Snipoma that we can request additional funding. It's not guaranteed, but it is a possibility to pick up that extra cost if there were any.
Thank you.
Yeah. I am a big McGill fan. So my question on this one is the Little League Ball Field. How many teams are actually playing on that field? Probably they do use it as a practice facility. I played on that as Little League, and the big field is fantastic. All McGill projects are number one to me. But I know that building this and building, putting all that money into these separate sections, the bleachers, the dugouts, and all that stuff. What is return on the money? Not just that. How much usage are we getting? Are we just building it? Have a park there that's going to be seen or maybe played by some kids? Because there are not, in White Pine County, total, a lot of Little League teams anymore. There were at High Plains, there were like 15 Little League teams, two in McGill. But the ball field in McGill is historical. Just a quick comment on Shane's scoreboard. To keep that nostalgic, to keep it the way it was, the ball field, when they put the scoreboard up in the left center field, they ran out with a number. How many runs were scored that inning, and so on, so forth. So putting in electronic, one would totally kind of undo what I think is bringing back a historical park. So the scoreboard's always been visible from all through that park, but it's just, I know that I was a kid and ran to McDonald's. I'd go out and do between the innings and put the number, two runs, five runs, whatever. But each inning was, each inning was posted. So when you factor that because of the cost into what we're trying to do with the ballpark, I love that part, the big fence, all of it. But some of the costs to make it, if you're going to restore it to what you want it to be, which is a great field and a lot of Kennebec history behind it, utilizing the handmade things would be a good, good option. But my other thing on was on Little League kids playing. There just aren't a lot of teams here anymore. And McGill, I think most of the kids that are playing Little League, I mean, nine to 12, have to come to Ely because they don't have enough teams. They have to help form the teams. It used to be two teams in McGill, easy, and they had to cut players. Now you've got a population of kids and I think maybe five or six or eight or whatever is coming, but they're playing on Ely teams. So those are my comments.
And I think you're right. There's not as many Little League teams as there used to be. I think that restoring the facility would help garner support and get more teams. I will say that when Dave and I went to take photos of the park, you might have seen in some of the photos that there was water guns and a speaker and things like that because there were several families that had just come to the park and set up a nice little park day themselves. So it is a used facility, and it is used on that side specifically. I think that, you know, restoring it would make it much safer and much more appealing to local residents and outsiders alike. And as far as the scoreboards go, I will let Dave speak to you on that and anything else that he might have wanted to talk on when we started walking up here.
Good morning. Dave Miller with Basin Engineering. We did the design and construction oversight of Phase Two, which is the big ballpark and the upgrades that are there. Even during that time, we started the punch list to complete the job that you guys have in your packets and up to today's date in the engineering estimates. So in regards to the scoreboards, the Little League board is only a few years old. There's no, no issues or needs on that. And the historical scoreboard, we redid the historical scoreboard last phase. So the scoreboard on the fence, the kids still run out between the innings, hang up the numbers, do their thing. That was a big, major part of restoring the old historical portion that we could not change. And so that scoreboard has literally been on the fence now for the last three or four years or so. And the kids get a kid who gets to run out and hang the number like you did when you were little, like I did when I was little. For the record, yeah. I grew up in McGill just below the ballpark for most of my younger days until we moved to East Ely. So, you know, it is a big place. In regards to the players on the field, the high school now plays back in McGill. High school teams all around come and play in McGill. The umpire, who has umped a handful of our games locally, is Puccinelli out of Elko. And Pooch played when we were in high school. And as Paul Johnson says, the ball he hit over the fence, he thinks is still going. But Pooch is the umpire. And I haven't seen him since I left Elko years back. And I ran into him as he finished up in one of the games, and we talked for a while. And he is very fond of our field. Other high school teams want to come. The traveling teams play there. The locals play there. Once we redid the park and fixed the features where everything is now safe to move around, to sit on, the old boards are gone. We need to do the same in the Little League side. The families still come and play out there. The new playground equipment is there. The families are there all the time. The Little League teams will come and play more there once the field is redone. You're correct. Even when I was a kid, there were a handful of Little League and minor league ball teams when we were in McGill. But I believe that is due to the fact that there isn't a place to play right now. They can go out there and do their thing on the field, but you're looking at the parents and family trying to sit on the bleachers that literally just need to be redone due to safety issues. Once we finish the field, that will all change. Right now, like I said, if you go over there today, you will see kids playing ball or stickball on the Little League side or the big side or just running around in the grass. It's a huge thing to see. The contractor took a picture of me literally standing when we hung the scoreboard. And so I forwarded that to my wife. I don't Facebook. I'm not a Facebook person. But she told me I needed to look at her Facebook page, and I think some of that's in your packet. Only about 30 or so of those responses were gathered. I spent two evenings looking over probably about 180 responses. And keep in mind, this is people adding it to their own Facebook page and passing it on. And so we were bouncing back and forth. Just the people talking about playing on the field. Glad they see the field. Want to go back to play on the field. I believe this is a great project for the community of McGill, but it's definitely a major project for White Pine County.
And our All-Star teams?
The All-Star teams. We can play more games there. Like I said, you have the high school there. The traveling team practices there and play there. It's become a major field, and this will finish the park off and finishing to address some of the, you know, the things that have needed a little attention for quite a while.
Is this the last planned phase?
This is it. If I get the deal with all the issues that have on my list? Yes, ma'am.
Very good. Do you have some comments?
Mr. Howe, I think I can answer some of your questions on who's going to play on the field. This year, Little League alone had four teams from out of the area calling requests to play on the field. They showed up to play. It happened to be there. It was raining. They wanted to play anyway, but the field got flooded. So they had to move them over to Merritt to play their games. The interest in that ballpark is just phenomenal. We have more than 10 letters of support throughout the Fourth of July weekend. The people that were born and raised in McGill, that showed up in McGill to sign a letter for support was amazing. It's a generic letter, but I made sure that they read the letter and they agreed with everything that I said. Having been a part of the Phase One and Two projects, Karen Riala did the Phase One project. I finished the Phase Two project. And the Phase Three project would just make that ballpark the most amazing park in the state.
You may have misunderstood. My, my question was how many teams actually play on that? I've been over there, I live here.
I, I think the improvements will, will definitely spur interest in new players, too.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, definitely. Well, you took a part when we went out there prior to, when we were even laying out design and checking things out. You would see a handful of people playing on the lawn and doing things. When you go now, it has attracted more of the community back to the park because it's not dilapidated. It's not a major safety issue. It's not, it's being, you know, upgraded. So you see a lot more people there. So you're correct. It has already started bringing the community back to the old park where we all grew up.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Tabitha, where do you want to go next on here?
If you guys have our preference, we can go with whichever one you want next or if somebody in the audience has somewhere to be, we can pull them up.
Doesn't look like anybody's in a big rush. I didn't.
All right. Then we'll go to the Little League one since I'm up here. So this is the, our Little League field in Ely. And this is for our Round 20 proposal. Next slide. So the summary of this project is, you guys can see kind of a map of the layout that we're looking at. I'm not an engineer, so this definitely looks a bit funky, but I hope you guys get the, the gist of what we're looking at. So it's basically an overall upgrade of the facility to improve safety, recreational opportunity, easy access, maintenance, and more. We anticipate this project to be $8 to $10 million. If this project is selected to go forward with application, we will have an engineer do official estimates for what these costs will be. Next slide. So the field layout. If you guys look at the vision photo, it's kind of what we're looking at for the layout of the field. So you can see there's ADA sidewalk behind the backstop area and the seating so that there's access. And then there's the dugouts that are upgraded. And then after the dugouts, there's a fenced-in bullpen area that's out of the gameplay area, but it's still fenced in so that people can practice and do all of that. Next slide. So our basic improvements. It's my understanding that the backstops of Fields One and Two are not the appropriate size for the to hold tournaments. The backstop is, has to be moved backwards 25 feet, I believe. So we want to address this issue specifically in this project to make sure that the fields meet regulations to hold tournaments and all kinds of other stuff. Other basic field upgrades include infill sand, bases, removable pitching mound, fencing replacement, cost-efficient and energy-efficient sprinkler systems, LED lighting, upgraded dugouts and scoreboards because some of the scoreboards need some help right now, and then ADA sidewalks and ramps where needed. We want to increase the ADA access throughout the facility, including to bathrooms, upgraded press boxes, seating, concession, storage areas. So in short, we want to upgrade pretty much everything that we can to make this facility easier to access, use, and allow for cost, maintenance cost efficiency. Next slide. So expand. A second goal of this project is, is to expand opportunities at the facility and introduce things that the facility lacks. These items may include exterior fencing, tiered lawn, bullpens for home and visitors on each field, press boxes at each field, two bathrooms to allow for one at each end of the park, a batting cage area so that portable batting machines can be set up and used in a safe location, the development of a new tee ball field, uh, the development of a new tee ball field, a playground so that kids can play on something that's not dirt, um, a fenced dog courtyard to allow for dog training and recreation that's off the ball fields, and additional parking in various areas of the facility. Next slide. Um, visions. Um, so here are some examples of the visions for this project. Uh, you can see that there's a press box at each, at each field and then you may have bathrooms or storage, uh, underneath the press box. Um, the concession would be remodeled to include a grill, uh, storage space, an ice machine and just more space in general. Um, it would include energy-efficient utilities, uh, scoreboards would be updated because some don't work at all. Uh, the dugouts would ideally have wind block on three sides with possibly a storage at the end, I've seen in some of the photos. Um, the batting cage area would be a simple netting that can be removed in the winter and the footing would be possibly asphalt or concrete to eliminate grass that needs to be mowed. Um, next slide. Um, here are some visions of what the new amenities would look like. We have a small playground and picnic area for the concession stand. Um, some of the pictures showing that are actually from the McGill ball field, so I thought those were great examples. Um, there are shaded bleachers, a dog courtyard with or without obstacles, a tee ball field to allow for a designated area solely for that purpose, um, a tiered lawn for beautification and a unique seating experience, and then batting cages with or without grass. Next slide. Um, so the need for seating and beautification. Uh, these pictures are of our current facility. They show minimal seating, little shade, gravel access, um, cement stairs, but no ADA access, um, parking on the roadside, steep hills to get to the field, conceses for storage, um, the signage looks to be vandalized and then you can see the current grassy hill, um, between fields or behind Fields One and Two. And that's where we would want to put the tiered lawn so that people can sit there, um, and then it would look nicer. Um, next slide. So the need for upgrading these amenities. Um, the pictures show various storage, storage areas. Um, we have sprinklers that create craters in the playing field. We have a roof of a dugout that has cracks, um, it caused leaping when it rains. The current concession needs a remodel to allow for more counter space, a grill, an ice machine, storage, et cetera. We have current, the current bullpen, um, I believe we only have like one or two of those, so we would like to have more of those. One on each side of the field. Um, and then, I'm sorry, I know you can hear my chating, I'm sorry. Um, anyway, and then so my favorite picture, um, you can see there's a little press box on the baseball field and it's very tiny. I don't know that you can even stand up in there. Um, I personally never had to volunteer or work an event in there, but I can't imagine that it's comfortable. And then also you can see where porta-potties were brought in because there's, they needed more bathrooms. So that's, that shows right there the need for it. Next slide. Um, so why this project? Uh, this park is over seventy years old. It is one of the oldest parks that has not had a significant facelift in years. Um, the amenities have exceeded their useful life, they require a lot of maintenance. Um, this facility is significant to you as it is, it has some of the only fields that meet regulation size. Uh, Little Leaks, Tee Ball and Softball practices and games occur regularly at the facility. Um, and then it needs goal number two of the SETS document, which is updating outdated infrastructure. And it also, um, needs goal number five of expanding outdoor recreation accessibility. Um, many of the upgrades include cost and energy efficiency such as upgraded sprinklers, they use less water and cover more area, LED lighting to reduce power costs and many other upgrades to allow it to be as low maintenance as possible. Many upgrades also increase safety at the facility, including ADA, grading, field upgrades, sand replacement and more. Uh, the facility is one of the most used facilities for school sports and use for recreation. Um, Snipoma alignment. This project aligns perfectly with Snipoma's goal for providing recreational parks and natural areas. The project conserves a current park that is in need of upgrade. The project needs at least two, or excuse me, at least three of the priorities of the Department of Interior. While we cannot confirm alignment with the first two, we believe that there's potential to include clean energy solutions and will strengthen relationships with local trusts. Next slide. Uh, support. This project has support from various coaches, families and leagues from both local and non-local sources. Many communities see this, the need to restore the facility and allow for more accessibility and accommodations. Um, also, I want to note that we received a few letters of support from families and coaches and then Jordan Hilton, he was not able to make it today, but he also, um, made sure to voice his, um, support in some of the, more of the basic upgrades such as parking and maybe the access and sprinklers and that kind of thing. Um, next slide. So cost and maintenance. Obviously, some of the high-cost items will be the development of new amenities such as the tee ball field, the playground, the dog courtyard, restrooms, et cetera. Um, these high costs will initially be covered by Snipoma funding. While we know that these new items will require more accounting maintenance, the project includes items that will cut maintenance costs in the future such as energy-efficient utilities, upgraded sprinkler systems, LED lighting and replacement of amenities that exceed their useful life. As we know, once something is seeded its useful life, it requires more routine maintenance to keep it going. Next slide. Um, the contacts for this project is Delaney and myself and then also Raven Jackson with maintenance. And that's all that I have.
Great. Do we have any questions or comments from board members?
Chairman, if you want to invite up our maintenance superintendent to comment a little bit about the usage of that park and the maintenance of that park. It's probably our busiest facility, I mean, besides Merritt Field, it's very similar, but the parking issues up there and the infrastructure.
Courtney, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So I don't know if you guys know, um, well, there is like between softball, softball is now a part of Little League. Um, they used to be separate and Little League, there's like thirty teams between the two. We just did All-Stars here and the amount of work it took just to get it up to code so that they could play here was a lot. We had to replace backstops, um, move bleachers, our, we don't have lighting on two of the fields at all. Uh, the lighting on the first field is awful. Um, and you live right by it, probably right in your house, but, um, it's just so old and there's so many kids. I feel like for a lot of years, Little League kind of fell off, just sports in general, and now it's making a comeback and softball plays all their games there, Little League plays all their games there. Um, we don't, constantly, we don't have enough bathrooms, we don't have enough storage. Uh, our irrigation system is awful. They're constantly just sinking and it's, just needs to all be ripped out, replaced. Um, it did great for All-Stars, I don't know if you guys have seen how many people were here for that, but it was insane and there was not enough parking, there's no ADA access, um, we don't have enough seating anywhere. The last field down there is Field Three and that used to be the high school field, but it is so, there's no bleachers, there's no crow's nest, it's that little shed that was on there, that's on the high school field. They moved all their games to McGill. They practice in McGill, they play in McGill. So now it's kind of just sitting there and we have the, I think they're twelve to fourteen, like the middle school age travel team boys. Um, they're trying to play there and we just, it's not up to par where it should be for all of these kids.
There's a good piece of property there that could be developed more efficiently. I mean, there's just so much gravel and weird pitches and bangs and no shade. And for, for as much use as that facility gets for our county facility, um, I'm surprised we haven't actually looked at it years ago to do some upgrades.
Yeah, it's got the old asphalt that's torn up all beneath the original concession stand and.
So regardless of how you want to rank this park with the other projects, it's something that we're going to have to address the county with general fund, special revenue funds for the trams right off the ground.
Yeah, I mean, I, I've lived my entire life a block from that park and I see what the usage is and I see what the demands are. And quite frankly, there's portions of that park that needed to be torn down and replaced when I was ten years old. And fifty years later, we're, we're still trying to patch them together and cobble them together and make them work.
We're just band-aiding and band-aiding over and over.
And you know, this, this McGill Park, these projects really fall in line with what I perceive as the future of Snipoma projects for the county because they, this upgrades facilities we're already maintaining and we're having to spend too much to maintain. It makes them newer, they're better for the users, better for the, for the maintenance staff, they're better for the community and, and without creating a whole new facility that we have to start from the ground up on maintenance, so. I like that. Other questions or comments? I think we're good.
All right.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Courtney.
All right, we'll move on to our next one on the list. Kevin, where, where do you want to go on this?
Uh, would you like to?
The Nevada Northern Railway?
Good morning, I'm Mark Bassett, President of Nevada Northern Railway, and thank you very much for this opportunity. Our Snipola, Snipola proposal is actually the fourth phase of different Snipola grants that we've already received. And, uh, this project is, um, going to take care of a lot of the issues that we face at Nevada Northern Railway National Historic Landmark. That is a fifty-six acre complex with sixty-one buildings and structures with the oldest building being built in nineteen oh five and the most recent building being built in nineteen forty-nine. For the past thirty-five years, the foundation has been working to preserve, maintain and deliver the, develop the complex as the foremost tourist destination in the region. In this goal, we've been very successful. Our visitation has gone from four thousand to almost forty thousand annually. We've come roaring back from COVID. The past two years have been the largest in the history of the foundation. This trend is continuing as illustrated by this past April, we had a thirty-two percent increase in visitation over the previous year. And year-to-date, our visitation is up twelve percent. If this trend continues for twenty twenty-three, that will be our largest year in thirty-six years and, uh, we'll have a projected visitation of over forty thousand. And, uh, while the visitation is commendable, this is bringing its own set of problems that need to be addressed. And the number one question we get asked down there is, where is the museum? And we have to tell people, look, you're standing in the middle of it. People aren't used to coming to an open-air museum. And so the largest part of this project is to actually build a museum structure on the complex there. And so this would dovetail nicely with what we do now with the excursion trains and would also give people a reason to visit when the trains aren't running. Our goal is with the building of the museum building is to reach out to the Smithsonian and become a Smithsonian affiliate museum. This is a program the Smithsonian has developed over the years. Um, we actually would qualify for a Smithsonian affiliate museum. And what that means is we can use the Smithsonian branding, their, their sun. And not only that, but we can bring their programs right here to White Pine County. And that would give us another tool in our toolbox to bring people here to Ely because they could visit the Nevada Northern Railway Museum, a Smithsonian affiliate museum. In addition to that, over the course of the past thirty-five years, we've been making inroads on different issues that we faced down there. But this is about the time where we need to address all of the issues. Uh, in the packet, I did include a list of all of the different, uh, areas that we want to address. Uh, the biggest one again being the construction of a building to become a Smithsonian affiliate museum. We want to complete the existing trail system throughout the complex. We've started it with Snipola, we'd like to complete it. And we've also have collected additional vehicles that have history with the railroad and, uh, we'd like to bring them out too. We're starting a new program with rail bikes. The first two were just delivered last Saturday and so, but we need a place to store them. And these are e-rail bikes. In other words, you can pedal down the track and when you hit the hill, you can kick in the battery. So this is a.
My kind of bike.
Pardon?
My kind of bike.
Yes, exactly, mine too. And, uh, the other thing this would do is it would bring electricity, plumbing and water to a variety, to a variety of the buildings on the complex. We have a blacksmith shop, but we can't use it because it has no electricity and no water. And, uh, our bus farm needs water and sewer and the list just goes on and on. One, the second biggest item is bringing fire suppression, uh, and heating to the Machine Shop Engine House. The Machine Shop Engine House is the largest building on the complex and only the Machine Shop is heated. And, uh, if you go into the engine house during the winter, you're going into El Fresco. And, uh, and it's, and actually our visitors are really bold because they do go in there and visit in January and February. But, uh, what we want to do is put in a heating system there probably in the floor and so it radiates up. Um, the, the other thing is too is the coaling tower. And, uh, we now currently store the coal on the ground. We want to use the coaling tower again as it was developed to coal the locomotives. Uh, the other real, uh, issue we'd like to do is pave the path between the White Pine Public Museum and the Nevada Northern Railway Museum. We just started, uh, we just completed the railroad track project between the two, uh, museums and we started doing peat pump trains last weekend was the first weekend of doing that. We now have trains that run on Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays between the White Pine Public Museum and the Nevada Northern Railway Museum. Another large, uh, item is actually water and sewer throughout the yard. We are using the nineteen oh six water system. And, uh, we've had the fire inspector come and take a look at the fire hydrants and he said, those belong in a museum. And I go, great, they are, but they're not really great for fire suppression. So what we're doing is operating steam locomotes that throw out sparks next to wooden buildings that have a hundred years' worth of oil paint on them. This is kind of sort of a recipe for disaster. So, yeah, so that's why we want to improve that. Uh, previous Snipola grants have allowed us to pave parking areas. We've done this twice now and without, already outgrown the second one. And so, uh, we would do additional parking. And, uh, so the entire total package is twenty-eight million nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars is what we're looking for. If we're successful with that, that basically completes all of the major projects that need to be done across the entire National Historic Landmark area. And, uh, this would also tie together our previous Snipola grants and the, uh, Jack Taylor Park Program, of course, is right across the street from the railroad too. So it ties different Snipola grants together. Over the past thirty-five years, we've estimated, uh, that we have brought in a hundred and seven thousand, or a hundred and seven million dollars to Nevada in tourist spending. We've brought in almost three-quarters of a million people. And, uh, our trend in visitation is going up constantly each year. Uh, this does meet the Snipola strategic plan values in sustainability. The project will sustain the quality of the outdoor environment by upgrading facilities and amenities with, uh, materials that will require low maintenance and conserve energy and connectivity. The railroad was responsible for building White Pine County and it connects all the three communities in the county. And, uh, our previous Snipola grant opens the track to McGill and so we'll be able to access McGill, Ely and Ruth. And in community, the railroad is deeply rooted in the three communities and it is intertwined with our community. During the day, the railroad operated the passenger trains, party trains, church trains. During the day, the railroad operated the passenger trains, party trains, church trains, and ping-pong trains, and we're paying the ping-pong train back. By combining the trail systems with other amenities will allow the communities and others to connect with each other, the natural landscapes and traditions, and the project will also improve the quality of life for all of the communities. If this project moves forward, it will increase visitation to Nevada and White Pine County. And again, being able to hang a Smithsonian affiliate on our name will bring an additional large audience of people to the community. The Nevada Northern Railway has been recognized as a National Historic Landmark. This is the highest recognition the federal government can designate on a historic structure. Other little national historic landmarks you might have heard of would be Independence Hall, Pearl Harbor, and the reason for that is because of our completeness. So, and the program, or the project is also included in the SETS document. One of the objects of the SETS document are the dark skies. We've been working with Great Basin National Park on the Great Basin Star Trains. The Great Basin Star Trains, we're going to post the twenty-twenty-four schedule on August third. Those trains will be sold out in a week, and there'll be like fifteen trains. We're now doing the Sunset Stars and Champagne Trains additionally, and those trains generally sell out, too. So, three nights a week, Friday, Thursday night, Friday night, and Saturday night, we have Astro Tourism Trains that are usually sell out. And the beautiful thing about the Astro Tourism Train, are you going to go home at eleven o'clock at night? No, you're going to spend the night here in White Pine County. So, and we're working to do the mountain bike trails, and the, so, and the other thing is, too, this proposal serves as a bridge for education interpretation, too. So, out of the different Department of Interior goals and priorities, we meet four of them. So, and that is about it. Does anyone have any questions?
Questions or comments?
Yeah. You're talking about building a museum, and you went to the state to try to buy a couple of buildings in Nevada committee, but you still have a state museum here. The state has the upstairs, I've been up there many times. And now you're building another museum, which would be in, not competition, but would be an alternate place for them to go as well. The state loves this museum, the White Pine County Nevada Northern Railway Museum. They are totally on board. I know that they're willing to forgo their item on the museum, that's an affiliate of the state. And the state itself is now in the process of doing like, I think it was nine-million-dollar upgrade to the railroad depot and so on and so forth. But the railroad itself is for somebody to go take a look, you can see it from the outside, the big buildings where the trains are stored. But I'm not against anything, believe me, but if we're doing two things that are kind of like going like this, that are going to be in competition with each other, i.e. the state museum and Nevada Northern Museum, which are kind of, they're right there together, but to put, do we want people to visit the state museum, or do we want people to go to Nevada Northern Museum? I understand all of the ADA access and all the facilities you need to get ready, you have toilets and whatnot, but the museum part of it that you brought up for a new building is just a question I would have, because there's already a state museum. So.
But they addressed that. It's not against one another, but complimentary. If you go to the East Ely Railroad Depot Museum's website, what they are known for is the original offices. They'll say those offices are stuck in time, and they don't have additional display space. So what this would be, would be complimentary to what the state is doing, and it would go more into what the railroad has brought to the community, what railroad has brought to civilization. We could have revolving exhibits, and this is one of the important things by becoming a Smithsonian affiliate, we could bring exhibits in from the Smithsonian and put them in the new building, whereas the same time, that would not impact the state offices on the second floor of the depot. The other thing is, too, and it always boils down to the almighty buck. Over the course of the past thirty-five years, prior to this past legislative session, the state of Nevada has put in three-point-five million dollars in their museum here. The foundation has gone out and raised thirty-five million dollars that we've invested in the complex here. We currently have the Snipola grant for ten million dollars that we're going in. We have the ability to raise additional funding to make a bigger package than the state. The state museum here is one of seven state museums, so they got to share all the money from the legislature with six brothers and sisters, whereas we're one and only. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just. I would have to concur. I'm a museum guy, and I take trips where I will spend several days touring museums, and it's never a question of, am I going to go to this one or that one? I'm a hippo.
Oh, yes.
It's, if you're a museum person, you're going to be in, in all of it.
Especially when they're so close.
And I think the opportunity to create an economic development impact for the community here is huge.
There is one thing I neglected to do. I did bring in ninety-five letters of support, and there's just two of them I just want to touch on real quick, if I may. The first one is from Ann Requa. And, Dear White Pine County Commissioners, my name is Ann Requa, Mark El Requa's great-granddaughter. The museum and organization that has been built from his vision is a tribute to the spirit of the days gone by and a cornerstone of Nevada history. Maintaining and improving the present infrastructure is imperative, but being able to continue offering this true journey to the public, and this requires substantial funding. Therefore, my family and I ask you to include the Nevada Northern Railway Museum's proposal as one of the three Snipola projects that will move forward to the Snipola Committee for funding. Ann has visited us a couple of times. We're doing a symposium the end of September, and she's going to be one of the presenters. So, one of the things we talk about here is touchable history. And we have the copper spike that her great-grandfather pounded in in front of the courthouse back in September twenty-ninth, nineteen oh six. And so to have his great-granddaughter and his great-great-grandsons visiting us in September is really an honor. So, that's all I have, unless there's additional questions.
I have to disclose, I'm a member of the White Pine Public Museum Board, where he mentioned the ping-pong train to the museum, just to make you aware of that.
Very good.
Is that running already, Mark? Yes, it's starting. Well, we're doing it Friday, Saturday, and Sundays. It's a learning experience. We brought down Locomotive eighty-one about two weeks ago. We brought in a test train. We're combining the big train with speeders. And so, last weekend, we did the speeders. This weekend, we're doing the speeders on Saturday, eleven to four, Sunday is twelve to four, and Friday is eleven to four. So, and we're just sort of ping-ponging that and forth. It is literally a work in progress here as we figure out the, how we're going to do joint ticketing and things of that.
You have three museums.
Yeah. Yeah, well, yes, exactly. And that's, it's basically a museum corridor. And the beautiful thing is, by going to the White Pine Public Museum, you know, people can see us on Altman. I can't tell you how many shows I've gone to, how many comments I've heard. I didn't know you were in Ely, Nevada. I never saw you. So, and the beautiful thing is, the White Pine Public Museum saved the Cherry Creek Depot. You know, they moved it in from Cherry Creek, and I took a picture of Locomotive eighty-one in front of the Cherry Creek Depot and sent it off to a friend, and he goes, how did you get to Cherry Creek? So.
Wow.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
Time machine.
Time machine, yeah. But this is going to give additional opportunities for tourism and the whole bit. Annually, the railroad does photo shoots in February, and one of the photo shoots will most likely use the Cherry Creek Depot there. This gives us something new and different to present to the public. And, you know, so that's the object of the exercise. So.
Cool.
Anything else?
Anybody else?
I'm good.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. All right. And we'll move on to our next items on here for presentation. If I can get into my computers. So, our next one up would be Lackawanna Park.
So, we're actually gonna switch it and do Ruth first.
Do Ruth first, sure.
Yeah. And I apologize, I don't have a presentation. The Blue Team Council is supposed to send a representative, and I just heard from the issues, I need to make it. So I'm just going to Ruth and talk through, they do not want as much as any of the other projects. It would be a very small-scale project. They don't have an estimate for cost, but essentially, it's a very large park with essentially, just like all grass. And then the toys are twenty to eight years old. They've been moved several times from park to park, and they ended up in Ruth. And so what they want to do is they want to replace the play structures, and then get rid of some of the grass to allow for better parking and better ADA access, because as it is, the park has one wheelchair ramp, and then it immediately goes into grass. So, they would be replacing all of the structures, removing a lot of the grass, adding parking, and removing the fencing as well, I think, is the main point. And they feel that this would reduce maintenance, because there would be much less harm to maintenance, and then the tours would also be much nicer and maybe less negative as well. So, if you guys have any questions or tabby, if you think anything else about, oh, yes, disc golf. So, apparently, quite a few people wonder if they enjoy disc golf, and they go up to Murray Summit or come down here to Ely to do it, and they feel that it would be nice to have a few, like three or four, disc golf. I don't know what the word is.
They're called bowls.
Bowls, baskets.
Basketball.
Yeah. And then also, they have, currently, there's like an old tennis court and basketball court. So they want to kind of get rid of the tennis court, because the pavement that it has is tearing apart, and it doesn't even look like a tennis court now. So they'd like to redo that area and maybe put like a pavement area, and then redo the basketball court so that it's back up to par, because it's, the pavement, or, I mean, concrete is crumbling. So they just want a bit of basel. And also, they do not want to replace all of the play structures, and the swings they feel are stable, they just want new swings on the actual set. So, it's a much smaller scale than any of the other projects being presented today. I apologize, I don't have a presentation to show you.
Questions or comments? Okay. That covers that, and then we'll move to Lackawanna Park.
So this project was proposed by a lady that lives in Cross Timber. She proposed the idea initially, and then throughout the project, she just felt overwhelmed, and she decided that she wanted to take it off the list, because she didn't want to come up and present and that kind of thing. And I didn't, I thought that the idea was pretty unique, so I took it upon myself to put a little presentation together anyway. So this is kind of the little information that I got for her as far as the vision for this project. Next slide. So, basically, the summary for this project is that it would be located right next to the Lackawanna Fire Department on county property, because that's the only way that it would qualify. And that's the only property owned by White Pine County in the area. So, there's quite a bit of vacant land on the area, so they would basically want just a little small park. They want it fenced in so that small children can play. They have, they would want parking, a small play structure that has monkey bars and swings, a pavilion with some picnic tables and a little picnic area, and then a half-court basketball court. So it basically just gives the area a small park, given the facts currently. We don't, we would have to get an engineer to get an accurate estimate, but it would be much less than a million dollars. So it would be a pretty small project. So as I said, they want a play structure that allows for multiple ages, a slide, monkey bars, swings, a pavilion, some picnic tables, a trash can, play surfacing so that you don't have to mow grass, basketball courts, fencing, and then security cameras that could be mounted on the volunteer fire department. And then here's some more visions of like what those amenities might look like, just something real simple to give people in the area something to do. Next slide. So these are some pictures of the current area. So you can see, Cross Timber doesn't currently have a park at all, and so you have to drive fifteen minutes away just to get to any kind of recreation. And currently, I grew up in Cross Timber, so the only thing to really do there is ride your bike or catch lizards in the stage brush. So, that's kind of a picture of what the recreation looks like there.
You turned around.
Next slide. So why this project? Again, the area lacks recreation. There's dozens of community and families that live in the area, and recreation is essential for youth, and like I said, there's not much recreation there. It's in the White Pine County SETS document as for diversification of recreational resources in our community. It would be a low-maintenance park, there's no grass to mow, it'd be low-maintenance play surfacing, fencing, and then a basketball court. So it's all low-maintenance amenities, and then, like I said, it's fifteen-minute drive to the nearest park. And then again, it aligns with a lot of the Snipola's priorities, which include making investments to support administration's goals of creating millions of families supported and union jobs. So during the construction, it would create union jobs, and it would conserve a portion of land that would be designated for outdoor recreation, which currently it is not, so we're increasing the percentage. And then centering equity, so we're providing a park to an area that is currently disadvantaged, because we don't have recreation in the area. Next slide. And then again, the initial high-cost areas are just the main development of the park, which would be covered by Snipola. And then as far as maintenance costs, it's already county-owned. The, there would be motion-centered LED solar lighting and security cameras, so maybe one light post with a light on it, that'd be solar lighting, and then, yeah, that's pretty much as far as maintenance goes. Next slide. And then the contacts again are just me and Delaney for this project. And then, yeah, I think that concludes all of our presentations, unless anybody else has more to provide some comments.
Question?
Taddy. There was a lot of, I think this is a fabulous idea. I appreciate her bringing it forward. I think it's something that's needed. I, the only thing that I have concerns about is the flood plain. Whether or not we had a lot, we had a lot of flooding issues, I think that would need to be looked at.
That was, got a little bit further than.
But I didn't know.
In the fire department, but that's a good question.
Yeah, I think there's going to be some.
I think technically, it's in the flood zone.
Yeah, I know. Like part of customers, it's in the FEMA floods, and I'm not sure where exactly.
So I think that that would, but I think that it's an excellent idea.
And I have a, one, or more of a comment on this one. You know, we have a lot of these kind of areas where people move out into these little ranchettes to be away from the things of the city. And now are we going to take the things of, from the city and bring them to the people that, you know, are we taking, bringing something out to country living? are we taking, bringing something out to country living that, that people have moved to be away from? Congregation areas, crowds, whereas you've got a lot of people that make the choice to live out there because they like having the next neighbor a half mile down the road.
But you could give your kids a sack lunch and say, go to the park. I mean, that's, I grew up like that. I was like you, went and packed up myself a little lunch and took off back when there was a lot of Las Vegas that was desert and went after.
I bet, I bet we could build something like this for a couple hundred thousand dollars.
I thinking, I was thinking too that maybe we could, this is something that we might, that is part of the Ruth park with some capital improvements to put down.
And look at these Snipoma projects for the big, these big projects.
But I, I, I think it's a, a really good idea. The only thing is that maybe, um, and, and do that, something that you could probably take a look at. I'm a little concerned and we need to put some culverts out there and some dub, you know, just checking into the flood plain stuff, I think that would be important.
A lot of those, um, flood issues we have this year with that snowmelt were past the escarp and down below the homes. That's where that strange dish can come.
For the record, Hank Vogler.
Go ahead, Hank.
You have an issue of, this was the biggest winter we've had since nineteen fifty-two. This is the first time in fourteen years the creek has run into my yard. And it caused flooding issues that we were certainly not prepared for. So, uh, with a little talk with Mark Trout, you could probably take care of any issues like that. But, uh, I think that it's a good idea. Just wonder how many children, young people that would use that park would be drawn from that area? Or would it be something that, uh, is, uh, a little overbuilt for the area?
Back in the old days, we used to get the community together and build it with the community, like partnership. And you need to get the county outside of Snipoma, if it decides, if this board decides not to rank it, to get the materials together and get purchase it and work with public works and then organize the community events to do some of these improvements. And then that, then that community takes some ownership over it as well.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a good idea.
Something also worth mentioning for the Lackawanna Park is that the woman that brought it to my attention, she actually runs a daycare, um, in the area and so that was why it was important to her. And she also grew up just like in it up there and, um, so she felt like it would be something good for her and the families that she watches, um, as well as the other families that live out there. Because I've noticed there's a lot more families that have young kids out there than when I was growing up.
I agree. I do, I think it's a great idea. And I commend her for bringing that forward.
So, if there's no other, uh, comments, we'd just like you guys to rank these and, you know, favorite to least favorite. And if there's projects that are just, you know, absolutely not, we don't wanna fund this, you know, I'd like to know that. And then if, also in these projects, if there's one thing that, that you guys don't like, that you're just like, we don't want that, uh, it's not a deal breaker for the whole project. You know, you can still say, we wanna fund that, but without these, these items or something like that. That way, um, we know where you guys are at with these projects, which projects you guys want to move forward and into application, so we can get that going in August.
What are we, are we looking for top three, is that what we're?
Yeah, so, we can apply for three through Snipoma.
Nice to be, please, I've got some severe questions about all of it. I wanna thank everybody for bringing their projects forward. But I've been here for quite a while and I see the, we have at least four. We've had Snipoma now for several years. But right now, in this day and age, we are trying to get employees to do all these different things. But I think that with all the projects we still have from the last time that are in the works, the, the building for the act, the marriage field, the his, his heritage park, that are still not even started. But what my main concern, and I brought it up before a little bit, not too much, is I, if, if this is gonna, this round is gonna be two, three years down the road, I'll be gone, I'll be off, I'm turned out. But what is it going to cost us? Let's learn, let's finish these projects that we have in the works right now. Let's get them completed. Because as we move on, all we ever hear from the community is, why isn't that done? Why are they delayed? Why is this and that missing? It's because of different circumstances, but let's get them done. Let's get those, find out what they cost to maintain for the future commission, not for me or anything else. But so that we down the road, if we have to maintain and we do, a lot of these are parks and they're gonna take county maintenance to maintain them, it's gonna cost you money. And not, not just for one week, it's gonna cost you in perpetuity forever. So, as we move forward with all these projects, and I got no problem with any of them, I have my own idea about how to prioritize them, but I think the best case scenario is to forego for, uh, this particular round of Snipoma, not add on to it until we finish the other ones. And in two years down the road, when Snipoma comes back, they've got three hundred and twenty plus million dollars in their fund. So, what you don't get today, you might get in two years, you could bring it back in two years. But I think, and I don't only think, I feel strongly, let's get these projects we've got done. Let's get the Jack Taylor Park done, let's get the, the Heritage Park, let's get the new big building you're about. You think that ain't gonna cost money? You damn right it's gonna cost. Because when it comes time to heat those buildings, the, it's going to, it's going to really, what we're really infected by right now, I sometimes use the wrong word, is labor shortage. And we right now can't even get people to work in our parks, we can't hire anybody. So, what are we gonna do with five or six other projects that are on here at one time and try to maintain each and every one? We're gonna have to add to the county maintenance department, if you, just minimal, probably five or six employees, new onmoors, all kinds of stuff. And these things cost money. Snipoma will build it, that's not a problem. But sometimes it's a white elephant. Yeah, they'll build it. But what does it cost after they leave? How much is that gonna cost us? How many employees? You're probably looking at, uh, and depends on how this county progresses and the property tax revenues rise. I'm not against any of them, I'm a big ballpark founder, it's been, it's all good. But let's take a step back before we move on and add four, three or four new projects and get done, finish up what we have, find out what they cost to maintain, what they're costing to operate. And then the next commission can look, is it feasible for us now to do one project at a time? Or are we way overspent on our budget because we can't afford to maintain everything? We gotta hire new employees, do we have enough money for that? I have a lot of concerns down the road. And these concerns are not about today. They're about when, when this project, whatever's picked, would be built in about two, three years because you've still got the other ones in the works. So, let's find out what, in my opinion, and I'm gonna ask the board, in fact, I'm gonna put a motion to table this, but, I am that, feel that strongly about it, each one that we've added on there is costing us more and more. And as we progress, labor goes up, materials go up, you can see it day after day. So, my concern is about not these projects, it's about what position is White Pine County gonna be in on the finance side of it in about five years or twenty years? What are we gonna be doing? How much money do we have? How much, what kind of growth do we have? Are the mines still here? Is our property tax, are we able to sustain all of our projects? And that's what I really am concerned, I'm very concerned.
So, what, what is your motion?
My motion is to table all this, uh, the prioritizing of all these Snipoma projects right now. Until a few, further date, till the next round of Snipoma.
I have a motion to table. Do I have a second?
For the record, Hank Vogler, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, motion to table, uh, has no discussion. Call for a question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nay.
Nay.
All right. Motion fails three to two.
Can I, um, just hit on that a little bit? So, um, one, or two things that I should probably mention is that, um, Snipoma has kinda talked about this being possibly one of their last big rounds, um, of funding. Mainly because, uh, in the past, this, uh, pot of funding has only been eligible for certain counties. And now, um, counties such as Churchill County are now available, um, eligible for funding and they see that, um, kind of continuing in trend. And so, what happens is, you know, there's the pot of money, but it gets less because there's more entities that have, um, the ability to take from it. So, you're gonna see less or smaller awards, that kind of thing. And then the other thing to add on, and I'm sure most of you guys already know, but Snipoma does require, um, maintenance of these parks in perpetuity, forever, a hundred years plus. So, it's not something that you, um, can take money and then only maintain for five years. You have to maintain it forever or you have to give the money back. Just wanted to voice those two things.
Just for background, um, what's happening is that other counties are, are having lands bills. They're public lands bills.
It's their bargaining chip. It's a bargaining chip to get, to get involvement in the public lands.
Back in two thousand and six, White Pine County had its own lands bill and that allowed us to be able to participate in the Snipoma funds, so.
Yeah, and these, and these kind of funds are gonna bring more people to the table and it's gonna thin that out. The, the point I wanted to bring on these, and, and prioritize these, uh, I, I wanna ask everyone how they're, what they'd like to see as their priorities, but as far as I'm concerned, the three top projects for me are the McGill Ballpark because this is, uh, this is phase three of a three-phase project. And, and it makes perfect sense to continue and finish the work we've started. The railroad is, is huge for, for the history of our community. It's huge for economic development in our community. And me as a county commissioner, my favorite part about that project is the point of maintaining that for the future is not in front of me, it's in front of the railroad and the railroad board. So, that, that takes, that, that makes that one very positive for me. And then the Little League ball fields, you take those, the, the McGill Ballfield and the Little League ball fields, you put those in there, those are existing facilities that we're already maintaining. And the majority of the maintenance that I see us doing there is, is over-maintaining because we are dealing with dilapidated, beat-down things and we're going in and we're patching and we're slapping fiftieth coat of paint on and watching it peel back off. And we are working and working and working. Instead of maintaining a park by going out and making sure the water runs and running a mower over it and doing a little sweeping, we're doing major maintenance projects just continually to these to just try and hold this hundred, fifty to hundred-year-old infrastructure together and we're failing. To maintain these for the, for the future, once they're done, they're gonna, I, I see that they're going to be easier to maintain. They're gonna require less time. So, um, just to throw out, uh, my first, my, my, my three picks in order are Phase Three McGill Park, Railroad, Little League.
Mine are the McGill Park, Little League, and the railroad.
That's, that's the way I have mine.
And it's the way I have mine also.
Okay.
I do think that they should be ranked.
And McGill would be a top priority if we're gonna do anything to the railroad and it seeks to draw quite good money on its own. And I'm not so sure that some of the pointing remarks that Mr. Chachas made aren't applicable. So, I would stick with the McGill Park and the Little League Field.
Okay, and then I would put the railroad at number three.
Now, do I have a motion?
That may my motion.
Oh, sorry. Uh, can we rank, um, all of them just because I know last year we had a project that was ranked in the top three fall through. And so, we had to come back to you guys and say, hey, is there a fourth project you'd like to come forward? So, I'd kinda like to just avoid that if you guys would mind ranking all of them.
I would rank Ruth and Lackawanna. Ruth next and Lackawanna, in my opinion.
My only problem with that is, I, we have no official presentation or representation for Ruth. I think, I think it's way behind in planning and I, I, I think if, for them to have something that was, be ready to submit, it's gonna take a lot of work. So, I, my opinion would be to reverse Lackawanna and Ruth, but.
Oh, August seventh is when this has to begin.
Yeah, and I, and I think, I think you gotta years' work to come up with a product, with, with, with the drawings and the, and the necessary packet to put in a Ruth request, but that's my opinion. So, I would entertain a motion, uh, of priorities.
I'll make a motion to submit as the item number one, first priority, the McGill Ballpark Phase Number Three. Item number two would be the Little League ball fields, number two, in Nevada Northern Railway, number three. I'd make that motion.
Then Lackawanna.
Then Lackawanna, no, then Ruth, then Lackawanna. Lackawanna would be the fourth.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, further discussion? Call for a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay. It's a small detail.
Yeah, my, my own, my, yeah. Uh, the only reason I'm, I'm always against that is, is I just don't think, I, I think that, that the Ruth project is just way behind on as far as where it needs to be. And we, and we have more to work with on Lackawanna, so if we're gonna do that, I'd like to see those two reversed. General will entertain another motion.
I so moved, for the record, Hank Vogler.
All right, so we had.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. In order, McGill Ballpark, Phase Three, Little League Ballparks, Nevada Northern Railway, Lackawanna, then Ruth. We have a motion, we have a second, further discussion?
I'll second.
Oh, we already ditched it.
Sorry.
Call for the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carrie, you're in so ordered, thank you.
Thank you, Barry.
I'd like to thank everybody for their time today. Before we bust out of here, we will open up for public comment one more time. Do we have a public comment on Zoom or on the phone line? No, do I have any public comment in the room? Mr. Chachas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, uh, from before, uh, in the past, and still have an ongoing concern, the commission needs to address and make it with the tour and rec board. Some residents of either White Pine County do not own, operate, or work in a hotel or motel facility. Some are not attending meetings in person, only by Zoom. Informational signs are being erected around the community to see different sites and recreation offerings. However, the signs do not indicate direction or mileage distance. We're wasting our money. If we have something, we have to be specific on where they can find it. The, uh, convention center is not promoting conventions or gaming, as stated in the NRS. A lot of money is being spent with little or no money. I mean, little result for the money that's being spent. In, uh, attending numerous meetings, I put in a written request for information. Every time you see a blue stamp on this, uh, request, it's another month and I'm still waiting. How many conventions been brought here? None, that I know of, or that they will admit. How many events have been generated since Mr. Harvath has been here? None. Give me a, give me a reasonable response. The convention center put in a new, uh, parking lot, took out the walkway, does not meet minimum ADA access. You waste your money. You have to address the fact that there are people that are handicapped and that board is not doing it. It's your responsibility to make them step up to the plate. Again, here's the stamps, no response. If they don't wanna respond, fine. I have a memo dated June twenty-six, nineteen ninety-one, city policy. All corners have to be handicap access, new construction, not happening. If you don't have, well, if you don't wanna see this community go forward with the federal regulations and the amount of federal money you're asking for, stop wasting everybody's time. I have a concern in regards to, uh, that board giving money to a private entity, a club. That facility that, that money went for pigeon control is a private building. That money needs to come back, where that board needs to be changed. That board put up a informational sign on private property, happened to be one of the members. The problem is, their business also blankets or closes off the view as you. The problem is their business also blankets or closes off the view as you're traveling by of that, uh, particular informational sign needs to be removed where everybody can see it. I've asked in the past for an updated list of, uh, inventory. This is years old. Where's the money going? We need some management, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, Mr. Chatches, thank you for your comments. Further public comment from the room? Carrie got all in. Oh, go ahead, Ms. Bogler.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, for the record, Hank Bogler, uh, Richard Howe made a very good point. You know, it's sort of like Santa Claus. Uh, and right after Santa Claus comes and we got to buy the batteries, we got to buy the battery replacements. I think we should be very, very careful with all this so-called fruit money that's coming in. If some of these projects do not, at some point in time, you know, maybe, maybe we are putting the cart before the horse, but maybe it will bring in the money to fund these things, to keep the maintenance going. But the actual building of the project may be the least cost of all over a period of time. And we, I think we need as, representing our county, we need to kind of really look at that with some real cost effective thought and the fact that everything seems to go up in value, in cost, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? One last time? All right, Carrie got none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So I have a motion from Richard, do I have a second? A second from Janet. Call for a question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie so ordered, everyone, thank you for your time today. This meeting stands adjourned.
This has been a Georgetown production. George Chatches reporting.